Well, we need a room. Yes?
We're live. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting of July 31, 2023. I'd like to introduce members of the board and our town administrator. We have Rebecca Oldman over there, and she's our town administrator. And we have Kathy Castrenellis, and we have Jason Nave. Mark's on his way. And Edward Watson, and I'm Daniel McDonald. Please join us in saying the pledge allegiance.
First up, we have a public comment.
I think we have one. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you very much for giving me the time. Jan Dempsey, 33 Uptec Road. And I just want to, I'm pleased to announce the first Household Hazardous Waste Day that we're able to have for quite a while. So I wanted to make sure folks knew about it. It's going to be held on Saturday, September 9, from 8 to 12. And it's at the Newburyport Department of Public Services at 16A Perry Way. And this is a collaboration that we're doing with West Newbury and Newburyport, and we're just really pleased to be able to pull this off because it will give Groveland residents the opportunity to dispose of hazardous materials in a safe and environmentally friendly way. So just quickly, acceptable materials will include oil-based paints, varnishes, pesticides, pool chemicals, gasoline, and other household hazardous materials or chemicals. And you can go on the town website, grovelandma.com, and go to Trash and Recycling, and then Household Hazardous Waste Reciprocity Calendar. And on that PDF, you will see all the items that you can bring and all the items that you can't bring. There is a cost associated for this disposal. It's $30 for three gallons or pounds, $45 for up to 10 gallons or pounds, and $60 for up to 25 gallons or pounds of materials. And one must bring their proof of residency for Groveland in order to be accepted to go in. And the other thing I wanted to mention is we could use a few more volunteers for this event. So if somebody would like to give us some time that day, they can either call and give their name to the Board of Health, or they can email me, jan-dempsey@comcast.net. And if anybody has any questions, they can see me here or email me that as well.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Anyone have any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a discussion and possible votes. Number one, approval of field use permit requested by Steven Crowder on behalf of the Pennsyltuck Youth Soccer for August 20, 2023, through November 11, 2023. Practices Monday through Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and games Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Make-up games on Sunday. Is Steven here? Do we need Steven here? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the field use permit requested by Steven Crowder on behalf of Pennsyltuck Youth Soccer for August 20, 2023, through November 11, 2023. Practices Monday, Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and games Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Make-up games on Sunday.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Rebecca, has this been cleared in terms of scheduling for use of the field?
Yes, we have verified that the field is open and available for use.
Any other, any other discussion? Jason?
This is Washington or Shanahan?
This is at Shanahan Field, correct.
Perfect.
Yeah, I just have a question on the way this has come up. From the booking system, is there somebody that manages that, or does it automatically send it to you?
It automatically sends it to me, and I'm able to view the calendar in the background and ensure that the field is available for use and it hasn't been reserved by any other teams.
Okay, because there's, there's a few of them that do the same thing from a booking, booking system directly to you. Okay, so then nobody monitors that, it just sends it, it just automatically sends it to you?
It's an online form. They fill out the online form. I get an automatic email. The email will then allow me to view all the questions that they answer, and it provides a contact information so that I can reach out and verify any additional information. And then it also pops up on the calendar.
Okay.
That's it? All right, put it to a vote. All those in favor? Kathy?
Oh, yeah. I didn't hear you say anything.
Four in favor, one absent. Number two, approval of special event permit for the Congressional Church for the thrift shop yard sale on September 9, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Congressional Church for thrift shop yard sale on September 9, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, that should say Perry Park for clarification purposes.
For Perry Park. We'll add that to the motion.
Absolutely. At Perry Park.
All right, at Perry Park. All those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Number three, approval of a one-day liquor license for LeAnn Goodwin for a private event at VC Memorial Park on August 19, 2023, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for a one-day liquor license for LeAnn Goodwin for a private event at VC Memorial Park on August 19, 2023, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Number four, approval of a one-day liquor license for Paige Sherman for a private event at VC Memorial Park on August 26, 2023, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of the one-day liquor license for Paige Sherman for a private event at VC Memorial Park on August 26, 2023, 3:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Number five, letter from attorney Steven David concerning Fadi Isa, 929 to 931 Salem Street. Possible discussion. Has everyone had a chance to read it? Kathy?
Yes, I've read through it, and then I had a conversation with the town administrator, and I believe our highway superintendent has this situation resolved?
Yes. Is that a question?
Sort of, like ask you to go up and say all the good, good complicated stuff like blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
Yeah. Put it on the record.
It's been resolved?
Thank you.
Has it been resolved?
So this was an ongoing issue with National Grid, had nothing to do with the applicant.
Yes.
There's, there was someone on maternity leave or away from their duties at National Grid, kind of fell out of sorts as far as communication. That's since been resolved, and the permitting should follow through this sometime this week.
Seems like, seems like he wasn't happy. Was it, was there a delay, or was it just a kind of, something slipped through the cracks?
It was National Grid with this particular application, the permitting process. I wanted some type of backing that the road was going to be put back in the same condition it was left in because it's a brand-new road that the town spent an awful lot of money on, fully reconstructing it. So I just wanted to make sure there were assurances there that protect the town from anything happening.
In hindsight, could it have done, been done any, any, any quicker? Not really.
Followed from National Grid, not anything to do with the applicant or myself. It just, we needed the procedures to be followed, and they weren't being followed. Pretty simple.
Okay. Anyone else? I don't think we need to vote.
I got a question. Renee?
Fine. Looking forward to taking a shower. Haven't had a shower in a while.
Please.
Oh, sorry, was I not on mute?
We now know that someone's taking a shower.
Was that, was that, was that Ruth disrupting our meeting?
I thought someone had commented, but didn't see anybody talking.
Is that trench going to go all the way across both lanes?
Correct. So the gas is opposite side of Ms. Fadi's property.
Wasn't that convenient? Is that trench going to be concreted before the hot tub?
No.
No?
So typically, not speaking for National Grid, but they pack their gas lines in sand. They don't do any compaction. It's basically they let the nature of Earth's rotation do their compacting for them. So that's part of the reason why I put that in there is within one year of the completion of their project, they had to mill and overlay that section of road from curb to curb, 50 feet in either direction.
But they're not going to hog it?
I think they were talking about trying to do it, but there were no guarantees that it wouldn't, they wouldn't end up having to dig into the road. If they had some type of engineering 100% that they would not have to dig into the road, then I told them that was applicable, but there are no guarantees.
Okay. Thank you.
All set?
Anybody else?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have number six, open meeting law complaint. Steven Baker, review complaint and draft response from, says council, but meant town council. Has everyone had a chance to read and review the, the complaint and the response? Yes?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the draft response from our town council.
I'll make a motion to accept the draft response from attorney Steven David on behalf of the town of Groveland. Oh, wait, sorry, wrong one. Who's, what's our council's name? From the council, from our town council, sorry. From our town council, as drafted in our packet. Maybe you should read that.
The response?
Yeah. Sure people know what we're talking about.
Bear with me. I saw, I read it earlier. Okay. This is directed to Steven Baker, 5 Sunset Circle, Groland, Mass. Subject matter, RE, Open Meeting Law Complaint, municipality, town of Groveland, Board of Selectmen, complainant Steven Baker alleged violation date, July 5, 2023, date of complaint and date received, July 6, 2023. Dear Mr. Baker, as Town Council for the town of Groveland, I am a receipt of your open meeting law complaint dated July 6, 2023, attached as Exhibit A, in which you allege that during the Board of Selectmen, Selectmen's, the board meeting on July 5, 2023, members of the board violated the open meeting law, the OML. Board met on July 31, 2023, and delegated its response to my office. I have reviewed the materials related to the meeting and questioned and discussed the complaint with the board and did not find any evidence of an OML violation. Your complaint alleges one possible violation of the OML, that the board allegedly violated the OML by authorizing a salary reallocation within the town clerk's office. Well, your complaint purports to be a complaint under OML. You do not cite which provisions of said law, the attendant regulations, or the division of open government determinations the board violated. Indeed, you do not cite the OML at all. Your complaint only cites two town meeting votes in General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, neither of which are the OML. No section of the OML governs financial decisions by the board or town meeting. Frankly, the OML does not govern the application of local bylaws related to personnel or finance. Rather, the OML exclusively governs the procedure of, in public access, the meetings of public bodies, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18 through 25. Based on the lack of evidence of any violation, the board did not violate the open meeting law at their July 5 meeting. Please contact me with any questions regarding this response and its, sincerely, Ryan Clemmons, Town Council. So that's it. So, motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Next up, this is number seven. I'd like the motion that we add this to the end of our list because Mark was involved with both votes, and I'd like to await his arrival if he shows up. So, can I?
So he did return my message and said that he's working late at a job site in New Hampshire and doesn't believe he'll be back.
He won't be here. All right, never mind. All right. Number seven, rescind both votes of the Board of Selectmen concerning the issue of town clerk's salary, waiver, and reallocation of funds pending an opinion from Division of Local, it says lol, Local Services and any other authorities in further review by the board and town council as necessary and effectively table the issue. We had voted on it, and then we voted to rescind it, and from my perspective, I'm not sure how the questions were posed, but I think the central issue is whether or not a, an employee, an elected employee, our town clerk, can waive, sum, or all of her salary. I don't think that question specifically was presented, so if you ask a different question, you get a different answer. And so, and then the second issue would be, if allowed, what's the procedure? Does it need to be in writing? Does it need to have some sort of timeliness to it? I simply don't know. Third thing would be, if yes, then what could we do with the funds? Would the Board of Selectmen have authority within that line item on the omnibus to reallocate within that same line item? My understanding of the law is that we could not transfer our money to another line item absent a town meeting vote and approval, either a town meeting or a special town meeting. So with that, it's my feeling that I'd like to table both votes and effectively just set them aside. And I had emailed the Division of Local Services to ask those questions. I haven't received a response. I'm going to try to get a contact, person's name and telephone number, and see if I can get that in, information, address, so that we can get it right. So I apologize for voting on it twice, and, you know, probably should have done more research. But with that, I'd like to make a motion to set aside our two prior votes, effectively tabling the issue, and pending further information on the subject.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that we did have, we do have from the year 2021, from the Department of Revenue Attorney, the reference to the General Law 41, Section 108, that the salary and compensation of all elected officials, officers of a town shall be fixed annually by the vote of the town at annual town meeting. We all have that. Well, I don't know if, Jason, you were on the board, Ed was on the board. Yes, you were on the board at the time. So the only one who wouldn't have that would be Mark. So we have that information so far. I guess where I'm at on this is also, my second point is that we have a highly qualified accountant who felt that she should not move the money. So I also say that, you know, when we have highly qualified accountant who knows how to do her job and do it correctly, let her do her job and say, no, you can't do that. And whoever wants to do differently, let them maybe appeal to all these other authorities instead of us. I just don't know why we're in the middle of this.
I'll do it on my own because I pride myself on getting it right, and I'm not comfortable with both of the decisions of this board. So you know what? If the board won't rescind and set aside prior votes, then once I get the information, I'll put it back on the agenda, we'll bring it back up. So, I mean, it's going to, it's going to get to the same place. So I just, you know, the, the issue of waiver was never addressed. Okay? Whether or not you're for it against it, that's, that's not the issue. That's a collateral issue. Okay? And I understand you voted against it. Fine. That's your prerogative. Whether or not the town clerk or anyone else wants to waive, sum, or all of their salary in the interest of public service, that issue is not addressed. Yes?
The only thing I would like to say is the fact that we rescinded the first vote means that there's really no vote on the table right now. So you could have addressed and bring it up at a later time without doing anything.
Yeah, but, you know, I said that, you know, the basis for the rescinding it the last time, that was erroneous, and I want to retract that because I'm not so sure that that's accurate. So I'm on record for saying that. So for that reason, I want to retract what I said. Okay? I want to get, I want to get it right, and, you know, I think competence is, is the issue here. It is not, it's not a political issue. It's, it's nothing else. You know, it's our job to get it right, and if the town clerk or anyone else wants to waive their salary, I think we should find out the answer to that question because it's unanswered at this point in time.
So make a motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, table. Discussion, but we can't discuss. All those in favor, table. All right, thanks a lot. I appreciate it. Next up is Kathy's issue. Kathy Castrenellis, creation of trash and recycling committee.
Yes. Trash. So I have a much larger spreadsheet, but I gave you each a section of it, and Rebecca is also working on her end on other aspects of the contract. But I just wanted to show you overall that the reduction to the two barrels did, did implement a change, it did seem to affect a change. We have moved tonnage down, and we have increased percentage of total tonnage that is recycled. So that's a good thing. And that's, the highlighted yellow shows you when the two-barrel limit was put in. But then looking towards the last couple of months here, for this year, I had a little bit of concern that the tonnage in May and June went back up. And I just thought we might need to ensure that the restrictions that everyone is following are being followed, so that if there's extra trash put out there that's not in a, what do we call those bags? The overflow bags, if it's not in overflow bags, and they already have a 64-gallon or two 32-gallon barrels out there, it would have to be tagged. And we don't have a drop-off site as West Newbury does. We don't have that worked out. Maybe a future contract, we could have that, but we don't have that at this point. So we really need the cooperation of everybody in town to hold to this contract because if we can keep our tonnage going in the direction that it is, it will help control the cost of this contract as we enter the last two years. And those are the most expensive years as far as curbside pickup increases. It's going to be hard, hard enough to include this into the budget. It's definitely over a 2.5% increase, the trash budget, in the last two years. But with the help of the public and, and make sure that the rules are being followed, we might be able to just get by. I would like to ask the board if they would consider two things. One is the formation of a trash and recycling committee to start getting ready for our next contract. But in addition, to allow our town administrator to enter into discussions with waste management, even at this juncture, regarding the contract and the cost and possible, you know, applying to see if we can get the trash bins for, so everyone has the right size, because I noticed the truck has the arms, so it could pick up that size bin automatically, which does reduce cost of curbside pickup. So I know we didn't go through goals or anything yet, but I kind of feel like this should be one of the big goals, and especially for our town administrator.
So what would you like to do, Kathy? Want to make a motion to create a committee, or just?
Well, yeah, make a motion to form the committee, yes.
What would be the structure, and who do you want on it?
I, I don't have a real big preference who's on it. I just feel like.
No, in terms of whether or not there should be a member of the board or, or someone else, that's what I mean, not who.
I'm sorry. Go, I missed the last part, I apologize.
Yeah, you want a member of the Board of Selectmen? Do you want somebody from Finance? Do you want our town administrator?
Yeah, yeah.
Just structurally, that's what I mean, not specifically who, but generally who.
Absolutely. And then I wanted, you know, a couple members of the public so that we can involve the general population with this endeavor because it costs a lot of money, and I think their input is important. Maybe we should do a survey. But in addition, I also wanted this board to, to stand behind our town administrator in pursuing any and all avenues that she feels she can on the current contract, even leading up to a new contract.
Could you use some help with this?
I think it's a great idea, and I would very much like to welcome the Board of Health to participate in these conversations and be a part of this committee specifically. I think it would be a great partnership, and we deal both collectively a lot with this issue. So I appreciate select woman Castrenellis bringing it forward, and definitely my input would be that it would be nice to have some additional assistance, as well as make sure that there is a member of either the Board of Health or their office present in order to participate in these conversations.
Shouldn't we talk to these people and maybe put it on next, next meeting's agenda and just see who? I think we need a little bit of a framework before we vote on it and see who wants to participate. Maybe, Kathy? You think we're ready to go today, or one more meeting?
I'm ready to go.
You're ready to go, huh?
Sure, yes. We could just invite the Board of Health. I think that would be nice. I can do it in person if you'd like. You know, I don't take no for an answer most days.
So what do you want, five people, seven people? Five people and whoever comes forward, if someone from the Board of Health wants to be representative, they can submit their name? be representative, they can submit their name?
Yes, I would like the Board of Health.
See who wants to be on the trash committee.
It's a great committee.
Might come out in droves, make your motion. I don't know where we are.
So I'll make a motion to create a trash and recycling committee that will be comprised of at least a member of the Board of Selectmen, our town administrator, a member from the Finance Board, and a representative from the Board of Health, and I'll say several community members, we'll leave it open, two to three maybe. I don't feel like it has to be a certain number.
Usually odd. Usually odd is a good practice.
It is, but this is, hopefully wouldn't be a vote each other down one. I think we're all in favor of.
Why don't we just say seven? So what does that leave?
Seven's good.
Two others?
Sure.
Seven-member board?
Sounds wonderful, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ed?
I think at a, at a minimum, you should have a representative from the highway and, and obviously somebody from the Board of Health. You want to get it right.
And finance? Well, if we need some members from the public, then we probably should go nine. It's going to be a big board talking about trash, but if it gets the job done, maybe that's what we need. Kathy?
Well, my only concern would be coordinating the meetings. I was on the Board of Finance when it was nine members and coordinating a meeting for nine people nowadays is, is quite an endeavor. I mean, I feel like the critical parties to this in the beginning are the town, from the town's employment side is the town administrator, Board of Health, and then from the elected boards, the Board of Selectmen and the appointed Finance Board. And if we, if we need help from our highway superintendent, we'll, we'll invite a man because we like him and we would have him attend. But I, I wouldn't want to have to make somebody sit at meeting after meeting while we talk about trash when he's got a lot of other things to do.
Ed, follow up.
Probably the one that has the experience with the trash stuff is the highway superintendent. When he worked in, probably in Portsmouth and worked in Beverly prior to that, so he would have, he would probably have more knowledge than anybody else that had been mentioned on the committee, maybe excluding Board of Health.
In response, if I'm allowed, town administrator is our procurement officer, that's how the contract will be bid. Board of Health is in charge of sanitation and again, be glad to invite our highway superintendent in and hear his, his thoughts and things, but I think initially, keep it a little bit small so we're able to get this off the ground and running. Nine-member boards are, are difficult to maneuver scheduling wise.
Would the board entertain possibly maybe liaisons? So you could have a liaison from the highway department so he doesn't have to attend the nightly meetings, but yet has input through the committee or something like that to the Board of Health members who also are part-time workers and wouldn't necessarily attend a nighttime meeting, but want to be a part of the conversation? That might be a potential solution for the board to, to consider when discussing this.
Well, we need, we need key, key people on the board, you know? It's competency and it's not just volume, it's quality. So without a representative from highway there, I think that conversations could go in a different direction and spend whales and waste time. So I'd like to, I agree with Ed that somebody from highway should be there. Maybe a liaison, I don't know how that would work.
Okay.
You know, I think seven members would be fine and then we could see who presents and maybe somebody from highway will be one of them, if we leave it open-ended. How about that? We'll pick the best seven candidates for the job, how about that?
Sounds great.
All right. Was there a second on that?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, creating a trash committee? Or in favor, one absent? Creation of public grounds and cemetery division and building and facilities division underneath the highway department. This is by, this issue is by the town administrator, the highway superintendent, Rockdower Cemetery Commissioner, Chair, and Steve McPherson. Do we have everyone here in attendance? Last meeting, we continued it because cemetery wasn't represented, is that, is that accurate?
Mr. Chairman, a point of order, I'm going to again recuse myself as my husband is in cemetery commissioner.
All right, thank you. Rebecca, would you like to spearhead this?
Of course, thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the last meeting, we had talked about the creation of the public grounds and cemetery division and the building and facilities division within the highway department. We talked about the streamlining of processes, efficiencies, and enhancing our capital assets at that meeting. And at that point in time, the board had wanted to hear more from the cemetery commission and whether or not they were in support of this idea moving forward. There was some miscommunication with me and the chair, Rockdower, and has, he has since, we were able to communicate after that meeting and he is present this evening, as well as Steve McPherson and Randy Carroll, the highway superintendent, to answer any additional questions that the board may have in terms of trying to move forward with this initiative.
And you've in our packet presented a, a flow chart of what it would look like?
That's correct.
Does everyone had a chance to look at that?
And as we discussed, this would be a phased approach. Obviously, the cemetery commission is an elected board and still very much in charge of the cemetery itself. So in talking with the cemetery commission, we had talked about a way to provide, again, streamline processes and provide additional resources for them in their department in maintaining the cemetery, as well as the use of that additional position during the winter months with the highway department and other initiatives that the highway department is putting forward. And so they had been on board with it originally, they had their hesitations, but they can speak more directly to, but that their main concern was how that would all work out. And so they really wanted to see an interim phased approach to see if it's something that they could get behind. And what you have before you is that phased approach. If it all went according to plan and everyone seemed happy with the arrangement, then we would move forward to dissolving the commission and moving forward with a DPW. If they did not feel comfortable with it and would like to keep the cemetery division separate, then obviously that would be the conversation of keeping the cemetery division as is and keeping the cemetery commission intact to oversee specifically the cemetery and the highway department. And the superintendent and I would work together in terms of trying to find other resources and other ways to try and enhance the operational capacity of the highway department moving forward.
Have all stakeholders read this that you're aware of and have seen this?
Yes, every one of them has been provided a copy of the memo. That was the original memo that was provided to the cemetery commission when we first started having these conversations before bringing it forward to the Board of Selectmen.
And they're all in agreement with the wording and the structure as presented here?
The cemetery commission, as I said, had had some hesitations, but overall they were, they seemed like they were willing to listen to see how it would move forward. At least that was my understanding from their meetings.
So if there were any issues or problems or in the future, we could, the Board of Selectmen could hear those issues and modify this?
Very much so. That was the whole intent, to make it flexible so that there was room for change. But again, I know that there was some hesitations with moving forward and the cemetery commission can speak specifically to those.
Would someone from cemetery like to speak to us? Here? Sir?
I'd like a copy of that flow chart thing you're talking about.
You can have mine, have you got it? If you want.
The last thing I remember is back in November of 2002, but that was.
If you would like to take a minute and read it.
It's the same memo, the only difference is the flow chart.
Well, we've never voted on anything.
State your name for the record, sir, please.
Pardon me?
State your name for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, Rockdower, I live at 107th School Street here in town.
And your position, what's your involvement?
I am the chairman of the cemetery commission.
Thank you.
What I remember we had discussed was putting a foreman-type position to include the cemetery and other places in town, Elm Park, some of the Ball Field, some of the other areas. And that person would be in charge. Unfortunately, since then, our cemetery superintendent has left for a much better position, you know, with more pay and more benefits and stuff. So I really don't know how any of this will work with us being included if we have all these people together and the highway superintendent feels he needs his guys to do this, that, the other thing, but the cemetery commission says, well, I want, we need a crew to do something different. We're an elected board, he's in an appointed position. Who is in charge? We don't know. This is something that has to be worked out. As far as I know, we have not voted on anything like that. It was supposed to be a trial period. I know Rebecca had said that she thought if we had a trial period, maybe sometime in the winter, we could go forward with, so we'd have something for town meeting. I myself do not have any relatives or anything in the, in the Riverview Cemetery. The other two members of the commission both do and it's near and dear to them. I have tried my best to do what I could to help out when I was asked to get on it through Bob Gupta. We had gone to school together and everything and I, you know, when I get involved, I try to make sure I do the best job I can. My family and everything, we have our position, our lot in West Newbury, which is a different, whole different area because we have four major cemeteries in West Newbury and they're owned and governed by the survivors of the people that are there. It, it's kind of tough. It's a little easier here where it is a municipal cemetery and there's money involved to help out. If we're going to do something like that, I think my position is, I guess now would be the time to do it, while we're in a transition period anyway, trying to find somebody who can do everything that Chuck did. I don't think we're going to find that person. I don't even know if we'll find a person that really knows how to take care of a cemetery, how to cut it right. The person we had in before, he, he could whiz right, he knew which section of the cemetery, like if this, this section over here needs to be cut every 10 days, this section over here, maybe every 14 days. So he'd go right through and keep it together. We have a couple of young people that are trying their damnedest to keep up with the work at the cemetery. It's a lot of work, you talked about stipends before. We, in our budget, have stipends for all cemetery commissioners, but none of us have ever taken a penny. So I don't know, you know, it just stays in there. So I know you discussed whether an elected official could do something like that, I don't know, something that can be straightened out. So if we're going to go forward with this, I am going to try to post a meeting for August 7th with the cemetery commission because that's the earliest I think I can get everybody together so we can give this a quick going over. Like I said, I, we haven't had an official vote on what we're going to do, we're just kind of going together. How many, how many people have, have applied for this other position, do you know?
We have four applicants currently.
Four applicants? Do you know when you're going to start, you know, having interviews or anything?
We were going to start in August, so just next month.
First of tomorrow. All right. It'll be interesting to see how that works out, but like I said, August 7th, I'm going to post a meeting for the cemetery commissioners and that's the earliest. And we will hopefully be taking an official vote on it. I understand what you're trying to do. I don't know how that's going to work. I don't know how one person can handle all that. It's going to be, if the cemetery commission is still involved, I just don't see, I mean, it's like this poor guy be working for two bosses. You know, you've got the cemetery commission and you've got Randy, you know? So I mean, he's got his job, he knows what he has to do, we have our job. So if in fact, it looks like it may, I mean, now, now would be the time to do it because we're in a transition period anyway. So it's not like we're starting all over again.
Sir, could I, don't run away. Rebecca, could you explain what, what exactly a division is? He raised some points. How is it that some elected official could be underneath the direction of a, an appointed person within the town? Does that, does that create a legal issue? Is it, is this kind of a division, a loose term of just cooperation between them and a sharing of resources or does that have some legal significance to the term division?
So technically, the superintendent is an appointed position by the Board of Selectmen. The individual is not hired by the cemetery commission. The cemetery commission is, main purpose is to run the cemetery specifically itself. So in terms of the division purposes, it's just moving that particular individual, well-appointed by the Board of Selectmen, under the direct supervision of the highway superintendent, superintendent instead of the commission where they're currently, the supervisory role is played.
So the highway department would not, I guess in layman's terms, be the boss of anyone on the cemetery commission as they are elected officials, but just the?
We would have nobody because they said they were going to hire somebody to go under the highway superintendent.
So highway could direct an appointed employee by the Board of Selectmen. So there'd be a sharing of the person under the highway, so I don't know.
It's supposed to be a sharing of everything. We need to have another person. If they're going to have the person on the cemetery to also take care of Elm Park and the rest of it where he has a crew, he's going to need a crew. They're going to, to do this, I think it's still going, you need another full-time person.
So what do you got to lose by just giving it a shot and if you don't like it, you come back to the Board of Selectmen and we unring the bell? We, we go in a different direction or we making a adjustment on it? I mean, is, is it worth a try?
Well, there's a few things that have to be straightened out. I mean, you're talking about like the cemetery truck. Will that go to the highway department when this goes over, if he needs it to do something else, what we need to do, you know what I'm saying? You can share to a point.
All from the monetary, the monetary standpoint, as we discussed, the trusts are under the cemetery commission's authority. That needs a vote of the board to release any monies, to utilize the monies that are in a trust. In terms of the budget, again, it's the budget that was expended, that was appropriated at town meeting is at the discretion of the cemetery commission as its advisory oversight for those monies. The cemetery commission submitted the budget for approval at town meeting, not the superintendent. So therefore, that role doesn't have any authority to utilize those monies and this is not an official vote for a DPW. So those monies will stay under the cemetery department until such a formal action was taken. So for the interim capacity and the interim trial period, those monies are still at the discretion of the cemetery commission.
We also have.
What is the trial period? Sorry to interrupt, but what would be the trial period?
So we were thinking of taking from the summertime, from when it's approved this summer, if it was approved this summer, until the January timeframe when the budgets are set and when we start to gear up for town meeting to see whether or not it was something that everyone was, could get behind and that the cemetery commission felt more comfortable with it, we could put together a warrant article and start that process. I believe it would also take a ballot vote in order to move forward with something and dissolve in the commission. So it is another year-long process in order for it to officially, officially take place, but we could start to put it in motion if the cemetery commission felt comfortable. And I've made that very clear, that the cemetery commission is not comfortable, it's not something that I would like to move forward with.
Well, some of the questions we had when you met with us was on sale of lots and perpetual care. If the commission is dissolved, who's in charge of that? The highway superintendent?
They would be, but the, the terms of the trust would not falter, they would still be for the perpetual care of the cemetery, the sale of lot would be for the, the purpose of maintaining the cemetery. So you can't change the terms of the trust.
Right.
So they can't go, like he couldn't take the sale of lots and say, hey, I want to go purchase another mower for something else, or I want to go buy, hire somebody to mow something else.
That could happen if you combine the person on the, with the cemetery with the other people from the highway department. I mean.
No, not those two accounts. Those two accounts will always remain separate.
No, I understand that, but I mean, as far as sharing things, I mean, are we going to be able to say, okay, this year is tough because we have so much rain and there's so much sun and grass, you can hear the grass grow, it's incredible. And what I feel could happen is that we could use some extra guys in mowing up there. I mean, are we going to be able to tap the highway superintendent and say, hey, look, we need a couple more guys to come up because we're getting a little behind? Is that going to?
That is my understanding and the. That is my understanding, and the superintendent's here to speak to that as well, but my understanding was that it was manpower, resources, machinery, vendors, repair work, all of the above. So, everything that the highway department is privy to would be something that the cemetery department would now be privy to under the arrangement.
Okay. How are you at home?
I'm in the command room.
Yeah. I'll check that out.
Sir, when is your meeting and your vote?
Pardon me?
When is your next meeting?
It's going to be, I'm going to post it for the 9th, 7th, whatever.
7th?
Monday the 7th.
Huh?
Monday the 7th.
Monday the 7th.
So, as a courtesy, I mean, we should wait for your vote.
Okay.
So, you will discuss this topic.
Well, I'm hoping if you can make that meeting...
And the highway commissioner?
Yeah.
All the stakeholders?
Right. I think we have to, we have to meet together.
I understand that, but, you know, I don't think we're ready to vote on this if you haven't met.
No, that's correct, I agree.
Okay.
So, we want to get a, we want to get an understanding with everybody first.
If you don't meet, just let us know, or let Rebecca know, because we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
You can have that.
Oh, all right.
I'm done with it. Thank you.
All right, very good.
Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I mean, we touched on it on the trust funds, that's all set, and, but, we still didn't determine who's in charge. The cemetery commissioner's in charge of the worker, if it's put underneath the highway department, or is the highway superintendent in charge? And I think you brought it up, that if the cemetery commissioners tell them to do this, and then the highway superintendent says, "Well, you know, you know, we should be doing this," who's ultimately in charge?
Yeah, can you, can you, can you serve two masters? Go ahead, Jason.
I think it would work like a typical chain of command, where if the commission had an issue with something that needed to be done at the cemetery, he would go to Rennie and say, "This is something that I'd like to see done with Rebecca," and that way there, he's not directly answering to two people, just one, and the collaboration between Rennie and the cemetery commission will continue, so the cemetery is insured that it will be well-kept.
That might work, but I think they need to hammer it out. This is operational nitty-gritty. I mean, it really is.
Right.
You know, I mean, to make a decision for the, you know, from the, for the board...
If you're going to, you know, bring everything together, the town of Rowley has two full-time people, and they work six months for the cemetery and six months for the highway department, and that's how they work there, so they have two full-time guys, and they spread out what they need to do between them. So, I mean, things like that can happen and can work, so I just think we need one person, my own feeling.
Maybe at your committee meeting, you can determine how that's going to work.
Yeah.
I think you need to resolve that issue, otherwise, you know, we're going to end up...
That's right.
...a potential conflict and back and forth. So, we'd like to avoid conflicts.
We'll all get together and have a party and...
There you go.
See what shows up.
All right.
I thank you.
Couple other questions.
Go ahead.
I understand, is this going to be done for trial period, and if it doesn't work, go back to what it was before?
Right.
How about the legal issues? Can this be done without a town meeting vote? I know that you can't dissolve the cemetery commissioners without a, without a town meeting vote, and I'm not even sure, that may even take a ballot box vote. I think when we, when we approached it before, it went to the town meeting and then went to a ballot, and, you know, is it, is it legal to do this without a town meeting vote? I know, I know that, as I said, the dissolving the cemetery commissioners if it worked, that takes a vote, but is this legal? The town council weighed in on this, and it can be done?
So, I, for clarification, so I know that you're correct, it takes a town meeting vote to dissolve the cemetery commission, and we're not removing the cemetery commission at this time, we're just jumbling the authority of the, excuse me, not the authority, the position, and who that position reports to, and how that position is authorized to perform their task and responsibilities, which is within the confines of the law. The creation of the actual department, like I said, the full department with the cemetery division and public safety, I mean, with the cemetery division underneath the highway would start to get into the DPW conversations, and that does take a town meeting vote. So, the actual position itself and moving that position under different authorities does not constitute a town meeting vote, or the need for a town meeting vote.
It doesn't take any authority away from the elected body.
Exactly.
It's, it's a sharing of an appointed employee of this town, which we have jurisdiction over.
The Board of Selectmen has appointing authority over this specific position, and you're just moving the position underneath the highway department, you're not changing that other structure.
Does it change reallocation or transfer of funds in any way?
It shouldn't.
Seems to be our issue this term.
No, it shouldn't do any of that, and, and...
Can you say that again, sir? It does not?
I don't believe, no, I don't think it should.
Why? Because it's all within the same line item?
It's all been voted one way. I would think, I would think it would take another, another meeting, a special town meeting, to say, "We're going to take this kind of money from the cemetery, move it over, because the highway needs it for this." I don't think it can do that. I mean, I would be up there yelling and screaming and everything else, but...
That's not the intent. The intent is not to touch the line items. The line items are still the cemetery line items, and they're underneath the public works structure of the budget, if you look at it.
They are, they are.
So, they're already under there, it's just the fact...
So, they're not transfers?
There's no transfers, there's no changing, and they...
All of this can work, like I said, on a trial basis.
Sure.
As long as nobody complains or makes a big stink about it...
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's...
It's going to have to stop.
That's a big maybe.
You know, so if we can get together and agree on how it's going to work, we can try it for a while, and see what we come up with, that's all.
See if you're playing the sandbox well. All right, anything else?
Well, it certainly would take care of the duplication of equipment, basically use the same type of equipment, and maybe, maybe under the highway, we can get some of those roads up at the cemetery paved.
Oh, that's, I certainly hope so.
All right.
We've been working on that for a while.
And maybe we could get a list of the Chapter 90 roads up there.
They're all Chapter 90s, right.
Well, then, then in the past, the cemetery started burying people in what I thought was Chapter 90 roads, and it was never brought, brought to the, before town meeting to dissolve those.
Yeah, I don't know of all of them. This is before my time up there.
All right.
But, I mean, I, Rennie just thinks our mowers are better than his anyways, so that's all.
Sir, we're all set.
All right.
You'll have your meeting, and we'll...
Yeah.
We'll meet again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I think we should probably table it until the next, next scheduled meeting, so I'll make a motion to table the matter.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Three in favor, one recusal, and one absence. We ready? Vote to dissolve Town Government Committee. Rebecca.
So, those two committees were something that were created by the Board of Selectmen, and we've never taken an official vote to dissolve them. The Town Government Committee was for the change to the Town Administrative Form of Government, which has passed and gone through town meeting. Those members, most of them have already resigned, and they're, I don't believe we appointed them last year, but in any event, they're no longer functioning, and the same with the Elm Square Committee, we had talked about the last meeting about...
We haven't got there yet.
So, I'll make a motion to dissolve the Town Government Committee. You're the chairman, Chairman.
I'll second that.
[laughing].
Am I the chairman of that committee?
No, that's the finishing committee.
No, you're the chair of the Town Government Committee.
Chair.
What, years ago, the CAC?
Yeah, that's what that is.
Government Accounting, Government Advisory Committee.
I think it's all the same thing, it just...
That was a committee to expand the board to five, I voted against it. Here I am.
But you wanted to hire a town administrator, and then you didn't.
No, I never said that, no. I'm all against hiring anyone. Close it all up.
Anyway, I made my motion.
Go fishing. Anyways, is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor of dissolution of the Town Government Committee? Four in favor, one absence. Next up, number 11, vote to dissolve Elm Square Committee. Rebecca.
So, that's the, at the last meeting, you had all voted to move forward with the Economic Development Committee, and we had talked about that was a more larger, comprehensive committee viewing all businesses and economic development, instead of just Elm Square exclusively. So, since the board decided to move forward in that fashion, this committee is no longer relevant, and all those matters will be picked up by the Economic Development Committee now.
There you go. Is there a motion?
Motion to dissolve the Elm Square Committee.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, one absence. Next up, we have, we have a pool of minutes, none. Appointment of the board. So, we have 21 appointments on this list. I spoke with the town clerk and was informed that number 14 on our agenda tonight, appointment of William Dunn, he's already been sworn in.
Okay.
And appointment of number 26 on our list, Alexander Woods, has already been sworn in. Number 28, appointment of Dr. Dale Angelico Hart, has already been sworn in. So, if anyone doesn't object, I'd like to read off all of the other names, just to acknowledge who they are, what the terms are, and appreciate their service, service to the town.
Mr. Chairman, I request the suspension of the, calling all the names, just do it in one, one song.
Is that permitted under the rules, Rebecca? As long as it's posted and open meeting, law compliance, fashion?
As long as the names are listed on the agenda, then that would be correct.
Okay.
I did have one question.
Okay.
The finishing committee.
I noticed my name on that.
And, I just didn't think we had that.
I need to go to finishing school, I guess, you know?
Well, I thought, I thought...
The fishing committee? I'm all...
I thought when we discussed the annual reappointments, I'm not positive, did we, did we discuss disbanding that, or, because I don't know that we have a full membership on it anyway.
I think what, I think there's some housekeeping that's in order, Rebecca, you can probably, you know, bring us up to speed on that, but, and hiring a town administrator and the process involved in that, I think we need the state legislature to, you know, approve some sort of, I don't know if it's a home rule petition, I don't know how you label it, ham sandwich, but somehow, we need to run it in, it's, we're on the one-yard line, and there's something else that needs to be done. Can you clarify this, please?
So, the committee was created in order to analyze a town meeting, excuse me, a town administrator bylaw, and whether or not we would move forward with the town administrator bylaw, or whether or not, whether or not the town administrator would function under the home petition that was passed by the state legislature and town meeting, to accept the provisions under Massachusetts general law, I forget the numbers, forgive me, or whether or not we would go forward with that specific bylaw and creating and crafting that bylaw. So, the committee members were Joe DeMore, yourself, Selectmen Neams, and myself. We did have one meeting, but we had not met since, and I know that when Joe DeMore had resigned from some of his other positions, he had mentioned that committee as well. So, currently, even though they're expired terms, there's only three individuals on that committee as of now, and we had not met after that initial meeting to get an understanding of how we wanted to move forward.
Is that enough for a quorum, three members?
Of a, of a, of a four-member board?
Yeah. So, we could meet, so we'll put it on the front burner, or rather, close to the front burner.
We could.
Double deck.
It's up to the board, if the board would like to continue on with that committee, yes.
I think we need to, right?
I think it would be important.
All right, anyone else want to chime in? I'll make a motion that the appointments as delineated on our agenda, number 12 through 33, be approved? Thank everyone.
Mr. Chairman, with the exclusion of number 14, number 26, and number 28?
Yes, as they are moot at this point, they've already been sworn in. So, with those exceptions, I make my motion to approve all appointments and the effective positions and effective terms, as stated on our agenda. There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, one absence. Next up, we have Town Administrator time. Rebecca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have really anything, I just wanted to update the board and let them know that I reviewed the payroll warrant and the bill warrant, and just the record for the payroll warrant, approved $230,597.67, and for the bill warrant, it's $811,321.10, which broke down to withholdings, $64,553.88. Special revenue and grants, $338,823.43. Water and sewer, $41,329.35. The light department, $426,868.47. And that's all I have this meeting.
Thank you. Would anyone on the board like to ask Rebecca any questions? Nope. Next up, Selectmen time. Kathy.
I'll just go first. Okay, so I just wanted to reach out and thank the residents of this town. I know that many of us don't see all the volunteerism that people do, but I did notice an individual who was mowing the grass over at the Veterans Memorial in South Groveland, so thank you to that person. I know that another individual whose yard backs up on the rail trail has been out there trimming the grass along the rail trail, so it doesn't get out of control, so thank you to that person as well. I know many homeowners mow the grass in the median, it's not technically their lawn on the other side of the sidewalk, and thank you to those people as well, because they, everybody takes part in keeping our town looking really beautiful, and it's appreciated what people do, and I wanted to make sure that people know that we do notice when you're out there doing things and no one's paying you for it, and thank you for that.
Jason.
Yeah, I want to thank the highway department for their work on getting the boat ramp back up and running, and I want to thank the electric company for keeping our lights on during the recent thunderstorms we had. And I also wanted to bring up that the legislature is set to approve their $56.2 billion fiscal year budget, which is going to include increases to the Chapter 70 fund, none of which for this coming year is going to fall to Groveland, unfortunately, because we do fall under the minimum aid district. But they are going to double our first student obligation, which means we're going to get an extra $68,000, which is a really a drop in the bucket, and rather disappointing. But there is $503 million to fund special education circuit breaker, which is something I'm going to request that the school committee help me determine whether or not we're going to get any part of that, and maybe helps offset some of our taxes. So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Ed.
Over the weekend, I received a couple complaints about the rail trail. I took a walk down there this, this morning, and from Main Street to Center Street, you got a dog mess in the, in the trail, you've got weeds growing up over the, over the fence, Japanese knotweed, you've got poison ivy that's growing out over the trail, along with other weeds. And I did see one person walking down the trail, the dog off the leash, but, and I know, apparently, the volunteers that were going to do the maintenance along the side of the trail, apparently, it never materialized or still in the working stages, and it looked to me like the highway department had done some of it. And that was the reason for the volunteers, because the highway department is taxed the way they are, they don't have enough time to go down there and do that. From Center Street to King Street, it looked pretty good, looked real good, but the first, what do you call it, like, the first half, could use some attention, you got the bindweed wrapping around the, some of the fence posts, and it just, it just didn't look appetizing.
Hey, yeah.
Come on, sir.
Yeah, if then, people that wanted it are not going to maintain it, then maybe we shut it down, that'll get somebody's attention.
You know something, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If you see a problem, do something about it.
I'm not interested in it, I voted against it.
Selectmen Watson brought it up, why doesn't he start a volunteer committee?
Okay.[1795.83]
Do something.
I will say that the board of selectmen did approve with American Rescue Funds the purchase of a trackless tractor that comes with an arm that will allow the highway department to clear the brush and debris off of the trail with minimal effort. And unfortunately, we approved that almost two years ago. And it's still on back order. So, I did speak with the highway commissioner, excuse me, the highway superintendent the other day because I had received similar complaints that Selectman Watson had brought forward. And we called the contractor to see whether or not that was gonna be delivered anytime soon. They were waiting for some type of mechanical device that maybe potentially our mechanic foreman, Bill Green, would be able to help us out internally. So, we're hoping that will expedite the process. And we hope to get that machinery in within the next few weeks. If that is done, that will at least help alleviate the brush concerns of anything growing over the guardrails and over into the trail. Again, it does not address any of the dog waste issues or some of the other issues brought forward. But we definitely hope to receive that piece of equipment shortly so that we can get working on that.
Well, that will help. But, you know, I mean, I see people gotta get it, gotta get it. And I think the town has somewhat of a history of underfunding maintenance.